Thank you Reverend Barron. Madam Clerk?
Councilor Williams, here.
Morgan?
Present.
Jacobs?
Present.
Mayor Kirkland?
Present. Move for approval minutes. So move.
A second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Councilor Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes. This time we open up the mic for public comments on agenda items. If you have any public comments on the agenda items, we expect you to go to the microphone, state your name, your address, and... Hearing the scene, not? Madam Clerk?
Resolution whereas the following individuals have requested a handicap parking zone. Number one, Mary Robinson Banks, 2002 West Fourth Street, Chester PA, 1903. Number two, Bernard Mills Senior, 3030 West Sixth Street, Chester PA, 1903. Number three, Shirley Skiles, 926 Fulton Street, Chester PA, 1903. Number four, Jill Williams, 2012 Edgemont Avenue, Chester PA, 1903. And number five, Barbara White, 213 Eco Lane, Chester PA, 1903. Whereas after a thorough investigation by the Department of Streets and Public Improvement, it has been determined that the aforementioned individuals have met all of the required criteria and has a need for safe handicap parking zones. Now therefore the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize appropriate city officials to install a handicap parking zone in the 2,000 block of West Fourth Street, in the 3,000 block of West Sixth Street, in the 900 block of Fulton Street, in the 2,000 blocks of Edgemont Avenue, and in the 200 blocks of Eco Lane in the City of Chester.
So move.
A second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Councilor Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize appropriate city officials to enter into a municipal advisory agreement with sustainable capital advisors to provide municipal advisory services for the 2020 aid and B funds for the City of Chester. Further, that it does hereby ratify the execution of all necessary documents filed and on behalf of the city.
So move.
A second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Councilor Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize the Department of the Council of Finance to refund to Sherwood Thomas the sum of $134.50 which represents reimbursement for the payment fee paid for 2405 West Fourth Street, which was paid in error.
So move.
A second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Councilor Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does approve the order payment of a series of bills and refunds as prepared by the Department of the Council of Finance and is shown on a expenditure approval list dated March 4, 2020, attached heretofore and made apart hereof, subject to approval from the Department of the Council of Finance.
So move.
A second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Councilor Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Bill number three and ordinance, an ordinance of the City of Chester, Delaware County Pennsylvania, approving the addition and inclusion of certain ordinances as part of the various component codes of the certified ordinances of the City of Chester.
I move that we pass... I move that we pass bill number three on its first reading.
A second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Councilor Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
We have bid openings this evening. It's for DF-19-60B Delaware County Demolition Program 2020, Chester City Demolition Contract Number One. First company, AJ Europe Incorporated, 3500 Concord Road, Assam PA, 1904. They have a 10% bid bond. Total amount, $199,934. I actually have two for BRB contractors at 204 Airport Road in Pottstown PA, 19464. Apparently there was a change, they had submitted one before the change, so I have to open both. The first one I opened, the amount is $122,500. 10% bid bond. That's the first one. $125,000. I don't really want to make an assumption, but I'm assuming that this is the corrected one because there is no bid bond attached to this. Last group, Yanuzi Group, 135 Kennelon Road, Suite 102, Kennelon, New Jersey, 07405. They can put packing tape on here, so bear with me. 10% bid bond. Their total amount is $256,603.
Say it to them in a minute.
Sure. There are all the buildings ahead, Your Honor. Yes, that was it. My apologies, that was all, Your Honor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We had, before we go into our public comments, two quick statements. One, we had prepared today to... We're still going to honor the individual. But we had prepared to have a citation prepared for one of our very own young men who has transitioned from this life to the next, who has worked very hard in this community to bring people together and work on behalf of others. And his family is here today. And we wanted to recognize him by way of a citation. Unfortunately, the citation is not prepared yet, but you're here. And because you're here, we want you to come up and we want you to stand as we recognize your husband, your father, your brother, your grandfather, great-grandfather, and our friend Reverend Calvin Williams. To the family, in particular, Pat. We see you every day, we love you desperately. We... Your loss. Well, I won't say loss, because when heaven's gained, you know where he is. And so we appreciate you, each and every one of you. And we thank God for loaning him to us as a community for the period of time that he did. We will honor him now, and we will honor him with our citation as soon as the machine gets ready. But we wanted to let you know how much we appreciate all the work he has done in this community. And his legacy lives on, all of you. And we want you to say something. I'm not shaking your hand, say something.
First and always, we honor our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, for being the help of our life and the head of this day. And we deeply appreciate all acts and honors that we have received in the last couple of weeks in the past, and our beloved husband, father, grandfather, great-grandfather. And I just want to say thank you to each and every one of you.
As we prepare to open up the microphone for public comment, before we do, just want to... Just want to say that our community has gone through very trying times in the last few weeks. Very troubling and hurtful time in the last few weeks. And we understand. We understand any losses, all of our losses. And it's all of our responsibility. And so tonight, we will hear from you. We'll hear from you, hopefully you'll hear from us as well. And hopefully, in hearing from each other, we'll be able to move our city, we'll be able to heal our city and move our city forward. With that said, we're going to open up the microphone. There are a number of people here tonight. And so, we're not trying to be rude or disrespectful, but we want to keep it to our three-minute limit so that those who would like to speak from the community would have the opportunity to speak. So the microphone is open at this time. If you... Once you get to the microphone, if you give your name and your address and then your comments.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Celeste Peterkin. My name is Celeste Peterkin. My address is 21st Street, East 21st Street. And I'm here because...
Excuse me, Ms. Celeste, you said your last name, but I didn't hear.
Celeste Peterkin. Celeste Peterkin.
Thank you.
So, I'm a resident here, a parent. I'm on the Widen Partnership Charter School Parent Committee. And we are deeply disturbed because our children are dying on the streets. They're not dying in the night, they're dying in the middle of the day when they're going home from school. Our children are under attack. And we need to do something about it right now. I'm concerned because I'm from Philadelphia, my husband and I. We know how it is to live in rough neighborhoods of West Philadelphia, North Philadelphia, Southeast, Southwest, we know what it is. But Chester is a fraction of the size of Philadelphia. And why we can't get it right here, I don't understand. We've packed up, we've come here. We wanted to provide our children with a better education, which we did receive, and we're still doing our best, we're being involved, because the grass is not greener on the other side, it's greener where we water it. But we're not watering it here. The money that we should be putting in for the future of our children, we should be putting our children in college. We should be putting them through school. But instead, we are putting them in the grave. We have children, and we are afraid. I don't know how many people have told me, "I can't wait to leave Chester." I'm out, I'm tired. We came to Chester to add to it, to bring to it. We have a business. We're proud of our business, and we're proud of where we live. It's a community of working people. We're not down and outsiders. We're a community of reaching people, we want to do things. But we have a serious problem here. The shooters are winning. And our children are losing in front of our face. My question is, what is the game plan? What are we going to do? We, not just the administration, we. A few days ago, I saw some statistics on Camden, New Jersey. We all know that Camden, New Jersey, had one of the highest homicide rates in the country. They're no larger than Chester. But today, they turned their thing around. Kids are surviving, they're thriving. They're not afraid to walk the streets of Camden anymore. We need to get in contact with them and find out what their game plan was. We need to call the governor. We need to ask him some questions. I don't know if we've already done this. Forgive me if I'm short-sighted and ignorant. But I know right now that I cannot stand silent being a part of a community and being involved in a school where we have to deal with the aftermath of children who are dealing with post-traumatic stress disorder. I don't care if we have to get cameras in the hotspots of Chester, bump up the police, get federal funding, have town watches where we sit out at night, because that's what we used to do in Philly. We used to sit out from nine to 12, neighbors watching each other. That's what we used to do. Whatever it is that we have to do in this city to get this shooting, I mean, 1:30 this afternoon, someone was shot? For real? We need to... Whatever it is, please tell us what the game plan is.
Thank you, Ms. Peterkin. Peterkin, right?
Yes.
Let me say this. It is always unfortunate if any person has to go through or suffer a violent offense in our city, in particularly our kids. And they're all our kids, every last one of them.
Yes.
My grandbaby's here, I told my daughter not to bring... My grandbaby's here tonight. I took my granddaughter to school this morning, and I was in tears because I look at my grandchildren, I look at these other young people, and they're babies, exactly that, they're babies. And we have babies, where I call it kings killing kings. They're our young kings, and they're killing the kings. So, we have some things in place. One of the things we put in place was a $15,000... Started off at $10,000. It's now ballooned to $15,000. $15,000 reward system for arrest and conviction. We put that in place almost four years ago. Sad thing is, not one person is taking the pain. Not one. And people know who's doing it. And that's the painful part. We have put up more patrols. We've... I have to applaud the police because our police units have taken off the streets. When they take six or seven or eight guns off the street, 10, 11, 12 pop back up. I was talking to a resident today, just today, up at the 10th and Booth. I know where you are. I was speaking to a resident today at 10th and Booth. And that resident told me that there was a gentleman approached her and said that there's a guy down there with his trunk open selling guns to kids, but never went to the police. Never went to the police, never went to the rest of the community. But still, here it is, in our community. And the person's not saying anything. So we have... We have... We do have some mechanisms in place. We even want our citizens to take advantage of the opportunities that present themselves right here in the City of Chester in the field of law enforcement. And we can't get folks to get involved, to want to be law enforcement personnel because if I become a police officer, I become a snitch. Come on. We're trying to... I'm going to put together what is called a family, a parent coalition, that's a group of parents that want to come together and want to encourage other parents to get their killed children to speak up, and parents speak up. I was just talking to one of my officers today. One of my high-ranking officers, today. Who happened to be coming up or going the right way. And an adult was going the wrong way. And he could have gotten, you know, taken and all that. He said, "No ma'am, you're going the wrong way. Just flip it back around, turn around, and you'll be all right." And the person, her daughter came outside and said, "What are you doing, talking to the cops? Don't you talk to the cops." So, we're not going to stop doing what we're doing, we're going to do more. We're going to do more. And not only we're going to do more, this entire community's going to do more, because this is our... These are our babies. These are our babies. And... It breaks our heart. It breaks our heart to see such young untapped talent in the ground. So we have some things, and we're going to talk about some other things that we have a little later. But we are moving forward.
Do you have any other meetings?
Oh, we're going to have town hall meetings. I want to have town hall meetings so that folks will get some input from folks, so that folks make a commitment to town watches, such as you said, and other things throughout the community. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Eileen Ricketts, I live in Sun Hill. We have monthly meetings, and I have to say, listening to this lady, I feel like most of the people that come to the meetings are complaining about silly things compared to what these people are talking about. But I have to say to you, I think Sun Hill's probably one of the nicest areas in Chester. And the people that are involved in our meetings care about Chester and care about the people in the rest of Chester. And we understand, you know, that there's a lot of bad areas down there that where people are just getting shot up, you know? I can only hope that the people that are sitting up here really care about everybody and are taken seriously. And I have to say that I feel that, you know, we don't see this in other neighborhoods. We don't see this in Prospect Park, we don't see this in Norwood, people getting shot every day. I have to feel that it starts with the people that live in the houses and how they teach their children to behave and to respect other people. Kids aren't taught to go out and buy guns in Norwood, you know? I mean... I think it starts with the parents. And I think that all of you parents need to step up to the plate and stay close to your children. And, you know, that's all I want to point out. And I care a lot about Chester. I'm a white person, living in a black neighborhood, and I don't see colors. You know, I like a lot of the people here that I know. And I don't want people to think that it makes a difference because I care about my children as much as you care about your children. We're all the same people. We just have to dig our heels in and get these people out of here that are doing all this bullshit. Thank you.
Bishop?
I grew up...
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Please, let's be respectful for each and every speaker, please.
Nikki Robbins, I'm pastor of Life in Christ Ministries on the west side of town, 30th and Booth, 3012 West Third Street. I grew up in Chester, graduated from Chester High School, and have pastored Life in Christ for 33 years. Over those 33 years, I cannot even count anymore the number of funerals that I've done for young people who have gotten killed in the City of Chester. My own nephew, my brother's only son, was shot and killed in Highland Gardens about six years ago. And a number of other people connected to me either by family ties or by church congregation. One of the young men who was shot on yesterday, his grandmother lives directly across the street from me, and two members of the family are part of our congregation. It hurts every single time a young person gets killed. It hurts when adults, older adults, get killed. Like the 75-year-old gentleman who was shot and killed by a teenager. Murder is wrong regardless of who the victim is. One of the things that concerns me is that there's going to be a lot of out-of-school time. I hear that school's going to be closed on Monday. My caution is, what level of escalated patrol will there be on Monday? But then, moving that forward to other times when the kid's going to be out of school for a protracted period of time. With this coronavirus stuff that's going on, it is conceivable that health concerns may cause schools to be closed. If there is an opportunity to just dump these kids out on the streets because of school closures, what is in place or what is going to be put in place to ensure safety of these kids in the event that that happens? I was asked that question, and I didn't have an answer, so I thought I would ask it from other people who will make some of those decisions. And then lastly, I mean, I'll let you address that, but last thing I would say is that... And then lastly, I mean, I'll let you address that, but last thing I would say is that, I hear things because of my connections within the community. And this thing is going back and forth, retaliation for... But somebody knows who is doing the shooting. And I'm honest with you, if it were my kids doing the shooting and I knew it, nobody would have to snitch. I would turn them in myself. We have got to stop harboring people who have decided to do criminal things. And trust me, not every child out there causing problem were raised by uncaring parents. The best parents doing the best job, can I guarantee that their kids are not gonna veer off. But what we have to understand is, if we, the guardians of our community, know something, we gotta say something and we gotta do something. I absolutely refuse to walk in fear. That would be to deny my confidence in who my God is. At the same time, for those who might have some apprehension, it is possible to report what you know anonymously. Because what is important is getting guns off the street and those who are using guns to victimize others off the streets. And if they're related to you, I'm sorry, their place is locked up. And the, and I promise you this, if they're not locked up, eventually they will be buried. Because of what people sow.
Bishop, thank you. Let me, let me answer the first part of your question, Mr. Robbins. We are, this is something that's coming at us very quickly, the closing of the schools. They're talking about closing a number of schools in Delaware County because of the coronavirus fears. And so, we, I've been talking to my commissioner and command staff. And so we are going to place as many officers on the streets as possible. But what we're also asking is this, we're also asking that there be safe places, safe zones for our kids. If you have, if you have a church and after-school program for that during that period of time, if you have a mosque and that's after-school period during that time, safe zones for our kids. So they can go someplace and feel safe and have a good time if there's, since they're doing the cleaning and everything with the schools. We're asking parents, because what's gonna happen is the kids are gonna be dumped on the streets. And so we're asking parents to step up to the plate just a little more and spend some quality time with the kids during that time. Because unfortunately, I wish, I wish, I wish we had two hundred, three hundred more police officers. We don't. And so, the parents, the mothers, and the fathers, the grandfathers, the grandmothers, and the uncles become the extra police officers here in this community. And so we're trying to do everything we can to protect our kids, children. And we need you as parents and as a community to help us help protect your children and our children. And so that's, that's the game plan. We're gonna put more officers on the street. We're gonna have more patrols on the street. But we wanna see more, we have to get some more help from the parents as well, the community as well. And we're hoping that some of our churches and our mosques can face their worship, will open their doors, and have activities for our young kids.
Okay, my name is Angela Smith. My son was killed in the city of Chester. I'm from Florida.
Angela.
Angela. My son was killed in the city of Chester, first one this year. I wanna know, I live in Florida now. I came up here to bury my son. Now I'm back up here because I'm not getting no answers from the mayor, from the police, nobody. Nobody's giving me any kind of answers of what's going on with my son's case. Where do I go at to get that kind of information?
Excuse me, Ms. Angela, you said you didn't get any answers from me?
I called your office twice. I called it when I was in Philadelphia, I mean, in Florida, and I called it since I've been up here.
Okay, I, I, I get a stack of phone calls like that a day, so I apologize if I haven't gotten back to you. Commissioner, you wanna speak on?
Yes, sir. I'm happy to say, since January the first, with the new administration that set in, the county attorney, the new judge. He has made a lot of promises to us, and he's been following through those promises. He has brought in a team of staff to investigate every homicide, those that have occurred this year, and those that have occurred previously. One thing we're doing is we're reading every, every case. And I'm proud to say, at this point in time, those homicides that have occurred this year, we're at a seven to five percent closure rate. That means we've been locking people up. If you've been reading the paper, we've been putting it in the paper. We've been putting people who we're looking for, officials in the paper. We're coming after them. Unfortunately, we need the public's help in getting these guys, and girls, I wanna say that too, and girls. Let's be honest, we're all here, we're all related in some kind of way. Chester's only so big. And every time I turn around, somebody's laying there dead. See, I see it all. I go to every one of these homicides, and I look these young men in the face, and that's in my brain for the rest of my life. So I know your pain. Because I get up every day, and I come here and I face all of you. And I take whatever you need to get off your chest. I have a thick skin, let me have it. Because I take that and I flip it, and I give it towards our officers, and we make things happen. We've been making things happen. I got the DA, January the first, when the new DA came in, I lost my, uh, my chief of police, Chief Loeb. He went out there. I saw something I never saw before. I saw more detectives outside. That's in the case. And I just had my twenty-nine years. Well, we're doing our case. Sometimes we don't have any answers. And there's nothing else to share at this point. Trust me, we believe you. We will be in touch. We will have an answer.
You know what, right now, I'm, I'm angry.
You should be. You should, you should be very angry.
I can't even get no answers.
Sometimes, man, there are no answers. We don't mean to...
Just to say, okay.
We don't mean to put you off. If we put you off, we apologize. But understand that our case load is extremely heavy. And sometimes we get caught up when we homicide companies are running twenty-four, forty-eight hours. Trust me, we will be in touch. I will make a point personally, of course. There's no disrespect to you. Because every child that's raised out there is important.
Deserved, just saying.
And they deserve it. So, my, my needs, I give my needs a lot. I'm not a tension.
I just hope I'm gonna have to plug that up here again.
Angie, Angie, um, and you know, you and I have known each other for years, years, decades. And you and I have always been friends.
Right.
I was, I was, I was there when, when, um... Angie, I was there. Angie, I was there when you, uh, walked in B and C's.
Yes.
I want you guys, I want everybody to know that myself and my staff, Department of Justice, went to Camden, to see how they were doing. The problem is...
Commissioner, I do apologize. I can't hear you because it's foggy on this side. Can you use the microphone because I can't hear you.
I just wanted to let you know, we did go to Camden. We did study what they were doing. And unfortunately, uh, what we're trying to do now is get several agencies to free up some money to do what they did, to duplicate and replicate exactly what they did, okay? But the only thing that's holding us back, and I'll be honest with you, the thing that's holding us back is manpower, okay? I would love to do a lot of different things, but as the mayor said earlier, I need manpower, okay? I can have all the greatest ideas in the world, but if I don't have manpower to get it done, it's just a waste of time. But what we have been doing is attacking, we've been at war since myself and my staff have been under the mayor's guidance. And we're not gonna stop. We've had a lot of successes. And you don't see the things that go on behind the scenes. Because before we took over, our homicide rate was thirty a year. For the last two years, we've been able to bring it down to eighteen. We're not done yet. By no way, shape, or form are we done. There's a lot of work that needs to be done, but again, we can't do it without the public's help. Without the mothers who are protecting their children, because that's my son. You know, you don't have to go far to see who's out here doing this stuff. All you gotta do is go on social media and see your nieces, your nephews, you know, your children with the guns. They're not hiding this stuff. Some, some of these guys that are on social media are better equipped than law enforcement. You can go on any of these young men in this city and see what they're doing. And they're not hiding it. Every time somebody's dead, somebody's bragging about it. We need the help of the public, as simple as that.
Good evening, everyone. My name is James Miller. I'm a longtime resident, one zero zero four Walkling Street. Mr. Mayor, Council, this is my first time over here. Excuse me. Walkling Street? Walkling? Yeah. Walkling Street? It's in Chester? Oh, it's in, it's in some village, V A U C L A I N Street? V A U C L A I N Street, Chester, PA?
Thank you, I just never heard of it.
Okay, no, no problem. Um, this has been my first time over here, Mr. Mayor, since you've been in office.
Excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Miller. It is, I wanna hear from everybody. And it's extremely hard to hear a gentleman speaking if others are talking. So let's be respectful of one another, please, please.
Yeah, like I was saying, this has been my, this is my first time over here since you've been in office. Believe me, I didn't come to point fingers. I just came to, uh, express what I'm willing to do as a citizen and to see how we can, uh, mend this partnership, because that's what it is. Um, I learned from probably one of the best officers ever, um, been in Chester, that the police are our tool, and they can't do their job without us. So, let me just paint this picture for you. Fourteen-year-old boy. Now, I don't know his name, but he supposedly killed somebody, fourteen-year-old. That fourteen-year-old boy lived with somebody, and that gun lived with somebody. These guns are in our own homes. They're in moms' homes, aunties' homes, grandma, grandpa. They're in our own homes. I guarantee you, if we start searching our own homes, we gonna find these guns. Now, what you gonna do when you find them, that's something you gotta ask yourself. But y'all still have that policy, that drop-off policy, no questions asked. We need to start utilizing that. And we gotta change this narrative of snitching. It's a difference between a witness and a snitch. We keep perpetuating this, this lie. Listen, we, they can't do their job without us. They need our help. They absolutely need our help. But to be fair, to be fair, the police have the best no-snitching policy in place. So y'all gotta change that narrative too. When, when bad cops do bad things, y'all have to be a witness. And to protect us, just like we have to be a witness to help you. It's a given task. But we got, the citizens, it's, it's on us, man. I've been, I've been hearing this all day. It's the police, it's the police, it's the police, the administration. It's not, it's not. Because they not, they not walking out there shooting our kids. Kids are shooting our kids, and they got militarized weaponry. Where are these, where are these guns at? They in our homes. They in our homes. And we gotta be willing, even, my, my son calling me right now. I'm gonna bail him out. I could bail him out, but I bet I won't do it. Because I love my son. I love my son. He, I know where he at, and I know that sounds selfish, but I knew where he at. I knew where he at. I can get him out today. I'm not gonna do it. Because he hasn't shown me that he's changed here. He hasn't shown me that he's changed. So I'm not letting him come home so I can bury him. I'd rather him stay where he at. At least I can talk to him, I can go visit him. When he show me he's changed, and he show me that he's not gonna hurt nobody else when he come home, then I might think about letting him come home. But until then, I'm, I'm, listen, man, we gotta be real. It should be more people in here. You know what this tell me? It should be more people in here right now. It should be more people in here. But we numb. We getting numb. We getting numb. And I wanna speak to what she was saying about PTSD. If the, if the administration can, can, can offer some type of help, where they can, uh, uh, give provisions to start our kid... Listen, we all, every person in here should be, uh, uh, treated for PTSD. Every person in here. Every person in here. And another thing I wanna say is that, this is a consumer city. What I mean by that? This is a predominantly black city. We're a consumer city. We are. But our police office is a majority white, and they not from here. They not from here. They, they don't know us. See, when I was coming up, I knew our officers, black, white, Hispanic, I knew them, but they knew me and I knew them. We need to bring the beat back. We need to have these officers walk in the beat. Let them start walking the beat, so they can get to know us and get some type of, some type of, uh, 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 care and concern. They not from here, they know they just come, they put their holster on, they come, they run, they do their job, whatever, lock you up, bang a couple heads, then they go home and talk about it. No, I want them to come here and love and care and have concern for our kids and the people that they serve, because they work for us at the end of the day. That's all I'm saying. So we need to, and I know you say you need manpower, but the men that you got right now, tell them to park their cars and get out there on their feet and walk around, like I, like we was raised. We gotta go back to the day. We gotta go back to the day. We gotta bring our village back. Because this new fangled stuff ain't working. Number one, these guns are in our homes. Start searching your home. Number two, ain't nobody snitch. You are a witness. These cops can't do their job without us. And number three, bring the beat back.
Mr. Miller, Mr. Miller, just to, just, I wanna, I wanna address or answer a few questions that you posed. Number one, first of all, thank you for being here this evening. You're right. It's my hope that the community would always come out in numbers and express their concerns or express their ideas, or express their willingness to work along with the administration. I'm, it's my hope that it would come out even stronger and stronger so that we have to leave this room and go to the next, to another. Um, we do have on board our chaplains, and our chaplains consist of both Muslim chaplains and Christian chaplains, so that we can have a conversation, begin to talk with our, uh, our young people and their parents. Post-traumatic stress syndrome is real. It is real as in this community. We all have it. I, one of the, the, the most painful things to do is come down as mayor and see a young person or an older person and have to be there and watch them take that person and put that person in a body bag, take that person away. It gets to the point, sometimes somebody might say, where's the mayor? Well, it gets hard on me too to have to see that each and every day. And so guess what? I'm, 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 I need the same counseling as everybody else in here. And we're gonna, and that's one of the things we talked about earlier, earlier today. This has become a health problem for our community. It's not normal for our kids to walk around and think that they're supposed to see a body in the street. It's not normal, and it's not healthy. We are, you might have gotten out of your seats today, some papers that talk about police recruitment. We have been desperately trying to recruit police officers from within. It is so hard. We reach out over and over and over again. We reach out over and over and over again to try to recruit folks from within our community to take up the field of being a police officer. And a firefighter. It's an excellent field, an excellent career, and it's an opportunity to protect and serve and give back to the community. So I'll put the shout-out once again, and we'll keep on putting it out there. If you know young women, or young women and young men, who are willing to step up to the plate and take on this career as an officer of the law or firefighter in our community, we welcome that opportunity. We put it out there and we want them. I tell folks, you can ride in the front seat, you don't have to ride in the back. We welcome that opportunity. And we extend that opportunity to each and every one of our residents. You know, you gotta do some physical stuff, so you gotta get healthy, you gotta get ready. But, and you also have to do some book-smart stuff. Because we want you to use your intellect while being a part of either force. So those things that we've made available, we continue to make available. We go to the high schools, talk to our high school kids, we go to our colleges, talk to our college students. We're trying our best to get more and more police officers on the force from this community. And the last thing is this, one of the things I've done since I've been mayor, and that is, I will not have a police officer that disrespects the community, a police officer that disrespects the uniform. That is not what we will have. And I thank you for your comments tonight.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Leon Henson, this is my wife Val. We run the Generation of Destiny mentoring program. The Generation of Destiny program is a part of Life and Christ Ministries. You don't have to be a part of our church to have your child or loved one be a part of our mentoring program. It's a co-ed mentoring program for kids between the ages of nine and eighteen. We have male and female mentors as well. Also, we all went through a background check, so you don't have to worry about any type of nonsense going on. We've been around for about three years, and a lot of you have never even heard of us. We've been here before and we've spoken. You can find us on Facebook, Instagram, we have a YouTube channel, we have a Facebook page, constantly posting things, some of you here, I recognize you and you've seen even forward in some of our posts. Our job is to be villagers to help improve the lifestyles of your kids in our community. We try to do what we can to impact their lives. One of the things we try to make sure we do is we have topics of discussion to let them open up and speak to us. Because a lot of times, even though you as parents are doing an amazing job and you're talking to your kids, you're only going to open up so much to you, because your mom, because your dad. Think about it from your own standpoint of when you were growing up, did you tell your mom and dad everything? But did you have a teacher sometimes that you might talk to about certain things, but you didn't necessarily want to talk to your mom and dad about? We're basically the same thing. A lot of times, people will even say, "Well, my kids are all right, they don't need a mentoring program." But you have a job and somebody trained you, what's that? That's your mentor. Same principle, we're just showing them different life skills. We have free transportation, we also have free meals. The meals are good, the kids are going to love them, and you're going to run into times where your kids are going to say, "Well, I don't want to go into that." When you give your kid the option to stay home, they're going to stay home. If you give your kid the option to run streets, they're going to do that, versus doing anything else that they need to be doing. When we were kids, we were told, "All right, here's where you're going to be, this is what you're going to do, and then we'll discuss it when you get home." And we've even had situations where kids have been like, "I don't want to be this, the mom brings them in, the mom comes and picks them up later." "Yeah, I can't wait to come back in two weeks when we do it again." But you've got to take the reins. Even if it's not your kid, you have a niece, nephew, cousin, neighbor, somebody between the ages of nine and eighteen that needs to be sitting with us every other Saturday, talking to us, opening up to us, so we can impact their lives. By you doing that alone impacts their life. If we're not there for these kids, we see what's happening. You wanted to stop, do something different. If you keep doing the same thing, nothing changes. My wife is going to talk to you about our next session. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Our next topic is called "My City."
Excuse me, ma'am, just state your name and your address for the record.
Okay, Valerie Henson, 415 East 12th Street in Chester. Our next topic for Generation of Destiny is called "My City, My Worries." Just let that sink in for a minute. My city, my worries. We're going to talk to our kids about growing up in the city of Chester. The drugs, the murders, the guns, the abandoned houses. We don't even think about the abandoned houses. That has, it gives our kids a look of doom. I'm just going to go off-topic just for a minute. I know as a homeowner, for twenty years, my mom and I have been trying to get a house torn down on East 12th Street. Twenty years, it's still standing. It's a safety hazard, the bricks are falling, but it still stands. But this is what our kids have to look at every day. We have to create a better look for our kids. And I have a son, had a son, have a son, rather, that was out in the streets. So I've got a passion for this. I love kids, but my passion is for the men, the young boys. They need our help, and it's up to us as a community to help. I remember when my son was out there doing what he was doing, I, as a mother, I went to the police station, you know me, begging for help for my son. All I kept hearing was, "He's not at that level yet." I kept going, "He's not at that level yet." And as a mother, you're screaming help for your child, and the people that you try, that you trust, he's not at that level yet. What is the level? What's the level? And this is what our kids have to go through now. And at our mentoring program, it amazes us. You would think that the kids don't want to talk, they're crying to talk, crying to talk. They open up, we find out stuff on the streets just from the kids. If anybody's interested, again, we meet every other Saturday, we have, the topic is, again, "My City, My Worries." This Saturday, the fourteenth. It's for kids, but if any adults want to come, come see what we're about. We're trying to help, we're trying to help, we have passionate mentors that want to help. No mother should have to bury their child. I don't want that for me or anybody else. My son is thirty-one, when I hear gunshots, I'm tech, "Are you okay?" Shouldn't have to do that. Nobody should have to do that. That's all I have to say.
Miss, miss? Miss Henson?
Thirty-twelve West Third Street, Third and Booth.
No, I want the address of that house that you spoke of.
Four nineteen East 12th Street.
Is your program at that address?
No.
No, it's thirty-twelve West Third Street.
And the house that you're talking about, speaking about, is four nineteen East?
Yes, East 12th Street.
East 12th Street, okay. All right, that's probably it.
Good evening, council members.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Andrea Will Bailey, address eleven fifty-two Keystone. So yesterday evening, or yesterday morning, my fourteen-year-old, fifteen-year-old cousin, Tavon, was shot playing basketball. And the person that we were looking for to be there, Mr. Calvin Bayak, was not there, and that kind of hurt big time. Because we are used to having the big guy there for us. That has nothing to do with you guys, but I just wanted to let his family know that we needed him badly yesterday. So this morning, as I was changing, putting transmission fluid in my car, there were three gunshots. And I kind of froze, and as I was walking down the street, I was reading these posts, and everybody is saying, "The mayor, the mayor, the mayor, it's the mayor's fault." And I kind of went on a little rampage, and I went live, and I'm like, "Well, what do you guys expect the mayor to do?" I kind of got on a defense. I'm like, "Well, what the hell do y'all expect the mayor to do? He's one person, what do you expect the mayor to do?" So it was just mainly two questions. The one question they mainly had was, why were the parking meters put up before there were traffic lights? I mean, before there were security lights put up on the west side? Why is it that we have no light, no traffic, no, excuse me, no cameras or no streetlights on the west side? Why is it that we have more parking meters than basically the cameras? And also, they wanted to know about the police officers monitoring people coming to and from the soccer stadium.
I'm sorry, say that second one again?
The second one was, they wanted to know, why is it that we have more police covering people coming to and from the soccer stadium? So on that one, I did kind of say that it was not really Chester paying for the police to cover the soccer stadium, but I wasn't sure if I was right or wrong, so if you can cover that one for me?
Sure, sure, sure. We have started with the help of, did he leave? With the help of State Representative Brian Kirkland. We received a grant for about two hundred and forty thousand dollars. We also partnered with Widener University when it comes to, and the Riverfront Alliance, when it comes to cameras in our community. So we have started the process of placing cameras in hotspots throughout our community. Our goal is to make sure that we have enough cameras, so that, and please, I want everybody to understand this, cameras do not stop crime.
But it was...
I'm going to get to that. It does not stop crime. But what it does, it is a tool that we are able to use to help solve crime. And so we have started the process of installing a number of cameras throughout the city. We're going to eventually cover the entire city as much as we can with these high-power cameras. We're excited about it, we have some areas in our community, Commissioner and I talked earlier today, where we're going to some of these property owners, such as Chester Apartments, owners of Chester Apartments. We have been trying to get them to install cameras for the longest. We're going to get on a little harder now, because we need cameras there. And in the meantime, though, we have started that process. You'll see a number of cameras going up in various neighborhoods, some of them are already up, some of them are already operable. But the cameras are a great tool for our community, and so we're doing that. The second part of that, the soccer stadium, the soccer stadium calls in not just some of our officers, but they call in our county officers, they call in our sheriffs, they call in different law enforcement personnel. They pay for them to come down, these are off-duty personnel.
And I explained that, but I just wanted to make sure that I was right, because I don't like talking about stuff that I don't know.
No, these are off-duty personnel that come down, they pay for this person, they pay for these services, and that's why you see those officers there.
Okay. And to the beautiful lady that mentioned something about parenting while she was up at the podium, I want you to know that us as black parents, we do not raise our children to touch guns or to do drugs or to sell drugs or any of that nature. We raise our children to know right from wrong. But once our children step that big toe out the front door and are out of our sight, they're no longer under our control. We can't control what they do once they step out of our doors. So I do believe that that comment that you made, you could have kept to yourself. She left? Oh, okay, but I meant that. I didn't mean that, because I felt like that was a little extra, and I'm sorry, but that was it, and I dropped the mic. I see, I'm in.
Thank you, Ms. Andrea.
Good evening. My name is Frederick Squeak Green III, better known as Squeak from Third Street. Chester Squeak from Third Street. I was born and raised...
Give me one more time, did you say Frederick?
Yes, Frederick Squeak Green III. Better known as Chester Squeak from Third Street. Now, I was born and raised in the city of Chester all my life, and I know a lot of y'all, and a lot of y'all know me. I have eighty-seven first cousins, a hundred and ten second cousins, I don't even know how many third. A lot of my cousins been killed in the city of Chester. That was my nephew, my great-nephew, that got killed yesterday, Tavon Avery. And when I was coming up, we had places to go. We had skating rinks, we had movies, we had the Boys Club, we had the YMC, we had places to go. The kids, they don't have nowhere to go. That's why they in the streets, getting into all this mischief. And then we had mentors, we called them old heads, and they would bust your butt and discipline you, and we respected. And that's one thing that's not here anymore. The kids don't respect their mothers, their fathers, so how they going to respect us? That's what we got instilled in these kids, to respect. We was taught to respect your elder at all costs. It was Mr., Mrs. These kids don't do that no more, or these children. And we had places to go. What we need to do is build a skating rink, build some movies, build some places so they can go and put that extra energy they got out here shooting to kill one another, because there's nowhere for them to go. There's a lot of empty spaces around Chester. Now, y'all may not have the money and the budget, but I'm sure y'all can come up with something and start building things back in the city of Chester. That's one point. Now, the other point I want to comment on is fifteen thousand dollars if you tell on somebody that does something. That's no money. It's not worth a person losing their life over, because, see, a lot of people is scared of the retaliation once they tell, because it's going to get back, somebody going to know who told who. You'd be surprised how information leads to the street. I'm from the streets, I used to be, but I turned my life around. I used to rip and run up and down these streets. Now, I work at the Chester Police Station. I wish somebody would say, "You snitch, snitch." No, I'm telling you, do something in front of me, I'm telling you, and I'm going to point you out. So don't do nothing around me if you don't want me to snitch, tell. Call it what you want, but your black ass getting told. And I'm going to call the cops, because I am a cop called.
So, so, so Mr., Mr., Mr...
You can call me Squeak.
Squeak from the street. So, Mr. Squeak from the street, after you've told on them, and after you've made sure they went to jail, you don't want that little teeny bit of fifteen thousand dollars?
No, it's, it's a lot to some people, but it's not enough to relocate. That's why ain't nobody telling. Now, you up that thing to about thirty-five thousand. I can't take it. I can't even take it. You will get some cost too now.
Chester PA, um, I just ran real fast to get Uncle Melody's step-up real fast. First, I, I wanna, um, I wanna say to everyone that has lost a loved one, um, due to government violence, just not over the past couple weeks, just over the past couple of years, or just in general. Um, I can't sit here and say I know what you're going through. Um, I feel for you. This is what we fight for. This is my only, my child right here, means everything in the world to me. So, I just ran and picked up a basketball racket over on Holland Avenue, though. But I want, I would be remiss if I didn't come back to express my feelings on how I feel about representing everybody here in the city. And, and I want to give a shout-out to the mayor and council, um, for the hard work they have done. People don't realize it's easy to blame people, or it's easy to blame someone. You don't realize the passion, the hard work, the suffering on the inside, especially when you have loved ones, young ones, and people that are out here, our law enforcement, Commissioner, uh, Blair, all of our police officers, even our first responders. I mean, things out here, when we talk about the, the trauma, we lost two kids yesterday, and we had a high school team that had to play tonight. The same night. I've never had to deal with that. I can only imagine not only dealing with that, but how the parents have to deal, and the grandparents have to deal with losing a loved one. Some interesting points that were brought up tonight, as far as the resources that, that are coming, and what are we doing as far as bringing resources to the city. There's been constant and ongoing conversations with the government, the state of Pennsylvania, along with the mayor and council, about bringing those resources here. And everything is not put out publicly, and then sometimes that's for a reason. And you know, it's, it, like I said, it's, it's quick to point the blame, but when I tell you that you have people that care, we're in this together. It's a community effort. We are all one. I've heard so many stories tonight, and so many things, so many ideas. But what are we gonna do moving forward after this night is over? Are we just gonna go back to what has been the norm? Nobody speaking up, nobody saying anything? Or are we actually gonna take heed to everything that's going on, and come together as a community to make our community a better place? And help these officers that are working and putting their lives on the line? I understand completely, sometimes, the disconnect between the community and our law enforcement. But at the end of the day, when we're running from the gunshots, they're running towards the gunshots. And it's our responsibility, I, I, I wanted, the young gentleman earlier, I wondered that he was talking about how, and when we say this all the time, how, you know, um, the, the parents know where these guns are. They know they can check. There's kids, there are kids' bedrooms, and we know, we know. We know it's, we're gonna do our part. At least I know I'm gonna do my part, and I have enough faith in our council that they're gonna do their part. We're going to do our part to make sure that our city is taken care of. I don't have to sit up here and give you all the accolades and the things that I'm doing for the city, because this is not political. This is about our city and our kids. We are losing our kids. I don't want to be the next person that has to suffer or go through something if anything has ever happened to her. I do this for our city. We do this for our city. We should all be in this together for our city. So, when we think about placing the blame, just think twice and say, "What can I do to make my city better?" That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jack Lynn Duncan, from the Wimpen Homes, proud of it. This, 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 this violence, what I know people, is just heartbreaking, heartbreaking. I've lost loved ones too, to gun violence. But I always say too, you can't ask children to act and behave in a manner that you as an adult don't want to. 'Cause I done seen some adults out of control, and then flip the script real quick and say, "Well, why these kids, this, this, that, and the other?" But better than that too, we see what's on the surface. They in a lot of pain, and a lot of hurt. You don't know what go on behind closed doors. You don't know what they have suffered through. Did anybody think they asked? Or just I've come across young people looking like grizzly bears, and I say, "Hey, baby, how you doing?" And then they say, "Ma, how you doing?" The same way we go through, our children go, go through, just on a different level. And that old saying, old folks used to say, "Babies having babies," that used to be a saying to us. It's a reality for us now, because you can't expect somebody to know and understand something that hasn't been taught. So if it hasn't been taught to the mother, how the ch- or the father, how the child gonna know? Learned behaviors have to be broken. They don't wake up one day and say, "I wanna be a killer." A parent don't wake up one morning and say, "Go out there and shoot who you wanna shoot." And like I, I heard early, gotta stop blaming one another, help one another. But in the same token, it's not what you say, it's how you get saying. And how you give, if you give it in love, it'll be received in love. If you come with it in a negative manner, it's gonna be perceived in a negative manner. You know, I love anybody, kids. I don't care about some or some not liking me, but if I see your child in a dangerous situation or break, make the wrong choice, I'm snatching him or her up. I don't care about you being mad with me, be mad with me, but I ain't got to hear about you crying, 'cause you gotta walk slow and sing low over it. So be upset with me, and yet, uh, everybody's child belong to Miss D. I don't care if I know you or don't know you. I, I'm, I'm about the children. But in the same token, you, as parents, you have to be open to somebody correcting your child. You have to be open to that. We got where we are today because you went outside, you wanted Miss so-and-so to snatch you up opposed to your mom. And I was the only child, don't get it twisted, 'cause I was a little slick too. I cut a corner before they, they built a new design that was going back. So let's not get it twisted or misunderstood. But, um, but, you know, but we had parents that went up like, "You couldn't do no wrong." And, and think you got, and Miss so-and-so said so, you better zip it lock and put it in your pocket and shut up. And you better not say, "Now, I know all that you been in." Adult conversation, I don't care what you knew. You better kept it to yourself and stayed in your place. But now, she said so-and-so, and I'm, I'ma do this to this, this, so-and-so, and so. We can't, so what we expect out of our children? If you wanna act up, why they can't act up? And nobody has the right to take nobody's life on no level. And it's a difference when you lose a loved one from sickness, opposing somebody else's hand. That's a different kind of pain. And Digg, I know that's a pain I don't ever want to experience. And my heart goes out to the mothers, fathers, stepfathers, stepmoms, that had to go through that and experience that. That's a hurt piece. But we all, we just can't leave it at a political. We gotta go back to the old school day, the community thing really being together. Don't mean you got to sit up in my house two or three hours, and we the best of friends, but we gotta come together as an adult and look out for these children. They feeling their way through. They don't know what they go through. They don't really understand. They don't know. They only acting out what they see, and what they think they know, and they don't know nothing. And you can't take offense because they reacting in a manner that they do. You know you ain't with them twenty-four seven. That's hurting pain. They don't know how to express how they feel. And there's been folks that they put trust in, even amongst their peers. As soon as the crowd come around, they put out their business. So now they angry, 'cause it was something they ain't really want nobody know. So you, the same way we feel about stuff, when we share stuff, them kids feel the same way, the same way. And when I see them, I know they being, "Oh, baby, be safe." Yes, ma'am. They ain't as disrespectful as everybody wanna portray them to be. That's how you treat them. You beat on the dog long enough, he gonna do what? He gonna bite you. He gonna tear you a new one. The kids the same way. You, you, they feeling disrespected. They come right back the same way. And no, you're not gonna save all of them, but make a great effort. I always give, they always say, "My, my children," to me, "Oh, ma, you always with your lectures and..." But my thing is, giving them food for thought, because I have had children come to me and say, "You know what, Ms. Jackie, that worked just like you said it would." Giving them something to think about. No, you can't make them do nothing but food for thought. Just to give a different outlook on it. Think the process through. But if we gonna keep walking past them like they in non-existence, we, we're nonexistent to them. Why should I respect her? She don't respect me. She like, and I seen grown people look at young folks. They, they acting just like the kids, and then they wonder why the kids act like they do. And I'm not protecting them and covering for them, 'cause they, but it's unlearned behaviors that has to be learned. This didn't happen overnight. This been for a minute, a good minute. And God bless the parents that ain't had no, no issues with their children. God bless y'all. But whatever ingredients you use for yours, try sharing it with somebody that's gonna break that. Don't just look at the fact that you're a campus. God bless you that way. Ain't nothing you did. That was just the wisdom and knowledge and understanding God gave you for you to put into yours. But if you can't help the other end of it, don't knock them. Don't put them down. I read stuff on Facebook, folks going back with petty stuff. I don't even, I, I can't get into it. 'Cause I'm a people's person. I wanna see face to face all that texting. I can't do all that. It's too busy for me. But I, I, you know, just to give you a thought, we, we can't get down on our, our political arena for everything. We ain't laid up with the political arena having our children. You got, we willing to take responsibility, and it don't make you a bad parent, because you did everything under the sun you possibly could do. Some children just got in their mind, they wanna do what they wanna do. You know, I, I remember a parent saying that they tried, they had so bad issue with their son at one point in time, and they asked for their child to be put in, um, in meals. They was told, "Well, unless he do something, or he hurt somebody," we can't take that sad. When you had a parent asking for assistance and couldn't get it. That's just my thought on, we as a community, just, we, we really have to come together. We got with the pettiness aside, who like who, and don't. It's about these children. And like that gentleman said, our city ain't big as a minute. We should be armed and armed with our law enforcement, stopping anything from coming in our city doing what they wanna do. That's how we should be. That's how deep it is committed. We arm, we're armed, women, men, mothers, whoever, fathers, 'cause that God ain't created nothing that I'm scared of, nothing. 'Cause at the end of the day, we can't, all of us carry his DNA, at the end of the day. So, we can change our city, but we gotta do it collectively and together, and stop being petty with one another. Thank you, and y'all have a pleasant journey.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Salim.
Yes, um, I'd like to share with you very quickly, uh, this is a great day, and we want to, uh, work, and we want to work how we can work, how our Lord tells us to work. I mean, Abdul Salim Ali, two forty Patterson Street in Chester. There's a concept among us as Muslims called, uh, Taheed. And that is saying, the oneness of our Lord, our efforts, uh, and coming to what our Lord wants to be done. Now, I know there's speculation against him, you know, but with due respect, but we about raising the city, raising our children, raising ourselves, progress. And, uh, I'm not going to, uh, you know, down a- anyone or anything, you know, like that. It's just that my concern is us moving with, you know, what we can move with. Uh, let me just say to you, uh, the unification of the soul now, what is good for my children, myself, and, and, you know, also good for your children and you. So we want to get into the unification of soul, what is the, uh, what our Lord is causing the soul to rise up now and do. The irresistible Lord, it cannot be resisted, it's just a thing like that. So we want to see, know what is happening, what our Lord is doing, what he's raising up to be done. So-
Briefly, and saying that, it says, uh, shortly, I heard a few deaths, and I'm humming, if I may share with you, the one that Jesus wanted to, Moses as well, you know, coming, you know, you know. So we, we gonna get to these things, because these are things that are very important, as Jesus said, imperative that we get on these things. He said, the prophet, Salim, peace and best, be building up in the prophet's state. He said that, uh, death is occasion for sadness. And real people have gotten away, and we need to be brought back, and some, and, and, and maybe that, that is what he was saying with, with that expression, is occasion to bring us back to, to sanity down there in this land. Good grief. So we certainly need to, to come back. Let me just say, uh, short of, there's quite a bit that we're gonna say. Out of all, there are hundreds of comments that have been said, if we can just take ten good, strong ones, and we lift, again, with due respect, you know, we about this. And some with, about this with, uh, what the Lord has to give them to be about this with, which is a great benefit, some, you know. And short of, God's willing, I, uh, so we want to, you know, come on strong. It says of this, it says, uh, I, I heard it, the, Eric earlier, so I don't, I wanna, you know, beat that, you know, be in front of it. It says, um, God tells us, he said, "Look, be," God tells us, "be regardful of the five." Now, the five senses, now, we've been to school science and so forth, five senses, smelling, and, you know, tasting, and so forth. These, these are things that, uh, warn us, guard us, that we respect them and be respectful of them. If we get out of line, they, who would let us know? If we see something wrong, we just go, "No." If we smell something wrong, and so forth, taste something, "No, no, no." So, if we, we are regardful of the five senses, and, you know, can take care of them as our Lord tells us to, then he grants us a sixth sense, a ability to see him, as we need to do now. See what he wants, what he's doing. Again, you know, this is seeing, and this is where we want to come to. Now, man has not been doing it. He, he, he simply has not been doing that. He went away, and in a nonsense way, uh, crazy sense, went away, and so, so far back that it brings on these things here, disease, it bring on cholera virus, all this, by not being, as our Lord instructed us to be, regardful of the five. So we want to come back. We, we want to respect our good sense. Old folks say, "Look, the child don't have the senses born with," and many wanna go lead and all this, and, and, and let us get good sense first, and certainly take the time to do, with due respect. And, and many of us are coming that way. God has given the command, "Come, rise," you know, "Soul, come to your, your good sense, your innocence." Let us be patient with that, doing that. Let me just say this, and I, there's quite a bit that we are going to say, because we're gonna see what God want his hand working, and, and what, what, and he's gonna be working. He said, "You working in your space, and I will work in my space." Let me say this, Chester is unique. We can't pattern that in no other city, no other town. Now, if we have to do this with this, uh, what God's giving us, Chester. That's why our children won't yield, won't give, because if we give, and the people with this mind that we have, and others take control, where have we, we haven't gotten anywhere. Our children feel that. Our children will stand down when we stand up. So, there was one last, and this is not racing by stuff. This is a, 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 intelligent, teaching and learning, teaching and learning. So for the benefit of humanity, God has placed a certain thing in us, that we can say no to some things quicker than some others. And this is not only for us, this is merciful, because they want to, we, we- Because they want to, we, we... I certainly, you know, I wanna stop here, I, I hear the one, but I was thinking of another point I wanted to make, uh, after making that. But, uh, I lost that, sir. Um, you know, that, that, this is very, very good for us. And, and, and my love was, and for a long time, a long time, a long time, a long time. This, uh, uh, last point was going to balance out with this, because some of us just can't take, you know, like, they taking it different than what is like. It, it, it's meant to hear, but see it. But, but there's a strength. There's a strength that is a mercy for all, you know. It's a strength, there's a strength. He says, I'm not gonna let the creation, the, uh, Satan destroy my creation. So, um, I, maybe next time, there's some, uh, making some statements that, uh, crazies help. Step along. I don't even use that word as a child. We couldn't even say a word like that. But, you know, they want to go against it. And they, they, they want to, to go against it. If we say something, or something come about, and they want to take it and twist it up and use it their way and to benefit them standing again, they are not to stand again. You know? Ali said, Muhammad Ali, he said, look, no black water, large thing like a bee, it cannot hit what eyes cannot see. They cannot see this, to undo it. Or to even, uh, speak it right now. This is for us to do, a mercy to, to, to all. So certainly with due respect to everyone. We want to gradually, as God said, we'll have gradually move into this and be a mercy, a mercy, you know, a benefit to all. Tahit on this.
Sir. No. Go ahead, Mr. Saleh.
Oh, I'm, uh...
I wasn't talking to you.
I'm certainly done, sir. I, you know, it's, it's, I'm done. I, uh, that was actually my last point. Shubron, I, I thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Saleh.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Saleh, let me just say this to you.
Yes, sir.
You are one of the citizens in this city that never misses a council meeting. And I will never disrespect you by cutting you off. I thank you for your will, your service in this community. And I thank you for coming to these council meetings.
Shubron, sir. Ever needed, something else is happening, by all means. I, uh, you know, I'm, I'm here to, you know, to...
Thank you, sir.
All right, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Saleh.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. I won't be before you long. My name is Adrian White. My address is 1232 West 9th Street. I'm in the heart of all of this mess. Uh, my question here is, I know we talked about a lot of programs and a lot of things that are implemented within our city. And I don't know how they're marketing their programs or if they're reaching the demographic that we need to reach. However, my question is to you, Mayor Kerplin, what are the intervention strategies moving forward in the days ahead that these residents can help you implement? Do we have to organize groups in, within our blocks to sit out? I mean, I'm, I'm terrified to sit in my living room, let alone on my porch. So, what things can we do as a community moving forward to AU and law enforcement to ensure that what happened yesterday does not happen again?
One of the things, and, and I, I appreciate the, the question, and I appreciate your presence here, Mrs. White. One of the things that, unfortunately, um, we would hope that this kind of activities, violent activity, would never, ever happen again. The sad part is that we live in a society, not just here, but in total society, where some folks just have no regard for life. Um, and so we have to face the fact that the possibility of losing an individual in our community again is going to happen, it's there. But we can do everything we can as a community to prevent it. I meant to say something earlier about, even have, everybody has an iPhone or some type of phone. We have a police app on the, we have a police app that is on our phones. And residents of this city can tap into that app and get that app. And there's information that you can find on that app. There's, uh, uh, confidential, uh, comments you can make on that app. That you can share with our law enforcement and other persons, I'm sorry.
You know the name of that app?
What's the app, Commissioner?
It's called Chester Police App. Okay, and I have one last question. Are we gonna implement any type of, um, curfew or something moving forward for the youth?
What, what, what we, what we gonna do is this. 'Cause it's one thing, I, I want you to understand something. There was a shooting at 1:30 today. There was a shooting at 2:15 yesterday. Two gentlemen shot each other, grown men, at 4:30 in the morning. We have a curfew in place, but the best person to deal with that curfew is the parents. And so, we're hoping that the parents will step up to the plate, because those who choose to wreak havoc on our community, they don't carry a watch. They just simply take advantage of the opportunity that they, they see to hurt another individual. Um, yeah, we, we, we're, we have a curfew. We can do better. But as you see, um, unfortunately, these tragedies have been happening in, early in the morning. Um, in the afternoon. Sundays, Sundays, Sunday morning. I mean, I had to leave, I was, I was in church and, and I, I don't see, I don't monitor my Facebook, the city Facebook. My communications director does. I'm not a Facebook person. But the first thing somebody says, you said, they said, they said, where's the mayor? I was, I'm sorry, I was in church. I, I don't mean that to be smart or anything. That's where I was and my, so were my children and my grandchildren. And I have to leave my place of worship to go once again and witness a tragedy. Um, and it becomes very disheartening and painful. Not at times, but every time that has to, we have to do that. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bonnie West. I'm a citizen of the city of Chester.
So, Ms. West, we said your first by here.
Bonnie West. Not only do I blame everybody up there, but I blame everybody in the seats. I blame myself for everything that's going on. You know what I mean? It was like, I feel like some of the questions that's being asked is just kinda jumping over the situation. Like, I still didn't get the answer of why was the, you know, the, where y'all take money at, up before the security cameras on some high crime areas? Like, it was just like, oh, I'm, I'm going to do it, or we're going to do it. It's, but it's not getting done. We've been complaining about this stuff for years. And I know this is my first time here, but I feel like if I don't say nothing, it's just wanna keep on going on. Like, I understand it's in the community. I understand some of the parents got something to do with it, but it's also on the police force. Like, because I've been harassed, sexually harassed, inside of police custody. So, like, I've been called police officers and, for my help. And you're gonna run my name to see if I got a warrant to lock my ass up? Like, so maybe that's some of the reasons why we can't run to the police, because some of them are corrupted too. You know what I mean? So, I understand, like, we all gotta come together. But at the end of the day, I feel like some of the people that's working on the field is not for us. I don't feel like some of them like us. Like, I feel like y'all took all the good ones out and put all these, people that just don't like us on the, the thing, that, that's how I'm feeling. My brother got killed by a cop. He's still in the police force. His name is William Carroll. He's still, y'all dropped the case before we even started the case. We got Butler out of here, like, everybody harassed to get Butler out of here. But I feel like he was the only one that was trying to do something. Like, the police harassed him, that's why he stopped helping us. Like, it's a whole lot of stuff going on other than the community, because it's out, anytime the police station get raided by the FBI, then something's wrong. Something's wrong in the police field. Like, I don't really know what was going on, but I'm just going to court. But what was in the paper? I heard that a gun that was already in custody got put back on the street. That's why FBI came. I'm not sure how true that is, but that was one of the rumors out on the street. I don't think you were in office when it came out. But it's a whole lot of stuff inside the police field. There's a whole lot of cricket stuff going out on side of the streets. Yes, some of these parents do know. And I be feeling some type of way about that too, because they on Facebook screaming, free the fuck killer. You know what I mean? Like, everybody's fucked up. Excuse my language. Excuse my language. But I, I'm just tired. Like, it just seem like it's always finger pointing here, pointing there, instead of just coming together. Like, I understand, okay, you was at church. God rest his soul, Bayah, he was at a lot of stuff that I felt like you should have been there for. You know what I mean? I, I, I like you as a person, but I feel like it's because some people are cool with you and you, you know, you go to church and you're a preacher and all that. That's why they more be on your side sometimes, so they try to... But still, wrong is wrong, as right is right. Like, Bayah was like, all my friends that got killed, Bayah was there. You know what I mean? God rest his soul, but he was there at everything. And I did not see you, and I was looking for you. I understand you was in church with your family, they safe. But what about our family? That's how I feel. And I understand you weren't trying to be smart, but you shouldn't say that. And that's where I'm at now with it. Like, but I understand you was at church and all that. I'm not done, I'm not done. I understand you was at church and all that, and I get it. But we, it's kids out here dying, it's so-called old heads passing these kids these guns, it's cops out here corrupted with some of these gang bangers. It's, it's all of that. So, like, what are we going to do? That's all I wanna know. What are we gonna do in, in, besides the false hopes and, oh, we're going to do it, or we might wanna do it, and I'm trying to do this? What are we going to do? What can we do? Other than what we might do?
Ma'am, I, I think, uh, throughout the course of the night, that there's been a number of suggestions and a number of things that we've already said that we're going to do, that we're currently doing. Um, this entire night has been a night of recommendations. Forgive me if I'm wrong, but I've heard a whole lot of what we're doing and what, what we can do. I've heard a whole lot of programs that are available in the city that folks have come up and said, please be a part of our program. I've heard all night that we talked about the cameras that are already in place and the funding that is available through the state rep's office, that we're, where we're putting up even more cameras. I've heard all night where we talked about $15,000 reward for arrests and convictions. I've heard...
I already had that conversation. I'm sorry, I don't mean to cut you off, but it's the same...
See, you won't let me talk, but, but I, I...
Like, I understand what you're saying, but why was the meters put up before certain cameras?
Ma'am, cameras were before meters.
Where?
Wyoming University, Sun Hills, Sun Village. Cameras were before meters.
Okay, so, all right.
So, so what we do, what we do, what we do, ma'am, what we do, ma'am, what we do, ma'am...
Drug dealers are not murderers, is that true?
Ma'am, what we do is, we do it in phases.
Because when my friend got killed, that's what they told her, his mother.
What we do, what we do with the cameras is we put them up in phases. So there, there's a start on the east side of town, and we move from the east side of town over. Yes, ma'am. Could, please make it quick, I'm trying to, I, I don't know if the press we gonna do. Are we still doing it? Press conference?
Um, I was just, I'm saying, you know, when it comes to these incidents taking place, is there any way that whatever violator that you pick up, that... 'Cause they always talk about the snitching and this, that, and other. Is there any way that they can just be held accountable for whatever part they may have played in the incident opposed to actually have to sit and tell who all was a part of what and what actions? When it comes to the crime, far as somebody being shot or however the, the situation may have gone down? If you aware of that individual being a part of that situation that takes place? Is it any way that that, that individual could just say what part that they played in the incident opposed to naming this person and that person that was a part of the situation? To, to bring down the, the threats and, and harm, you know, harm to, to one another? 'Cause you know, when they get to telling on each other, two or three of them end up dead, or two, two or three of them end up shot up for whatever the crime far as the gun incident consists of?
If, if an individual sees a crime?
Or they're part of that crime? And they are at, they are now in court? Is it, it goes to, after the arrest, it goes to the court system?
I know, I understand, I know what I'm saying. When you, when they're being brought in for questioning.
Okay.
Can it be limited to what their participation was? Opposed to, um, answer for everybody else that participated in it? To, to bring down the, 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 the extracurricular of the real town?
Mr. Steve, I think I understand what you're saying. You're saying if somebody is brought in and they're part of this group, can they, as the individual, just say, yeah, I did X, Y, and Z? And nobody's gonna ask them about anybody else? Just what they did? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
I don't know.
I'm, I mean, I'm just saying, what I'm looking at is the retaliation. How does, you know, you wanna bring that down? So if you have an individual, well, look, I tell you what I did. I ain't great, tell you what Ralph did and whatever the case, whoever. I'm, 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 I'm just asking, I'm not a criminal, so I don't know. I'm, I'm just trying to figure out, is, would that help a situation from the violence to be deterred a little more until you come up with a better solution or how to handle it?
I might ask Commissioner if he...
Maybe that don't make sense to y'all?
It makes no sense. I think I understand what you're trying to say. Unfortunately, um, this is why you have attorneys. When a person's brought in, he has certain rights. And we, as law enforcement, have to make sure we don't violate his rights based on what the information is, what his participation was at that particular time. We can have a conversation, but we can't make promises without he, he having some type of legal representation and their agreements made. So every situation is completely different.
It depends on the circumstances.
Depends on the circumstances, it depends on whether or not this person has legal representation. It depends on a number of things. It's never the same type of situation.
I know, for your law, for your, I, I'm asking, I mean, because like Earl here was saying that it's always retaliation.
Well, there is, but you also have to understand, depending on the amount of information determines how far the district attorney's office gets involved, how far they want to, what they want to offer him for his cooperation. There's witness protection programs available, which we do utilize quite frequently. Sometimes people don't want that, anything follows. And sometimes when we do put them in witness protection program, they come back to the city of Chester like nothing happened.
How do we too? How do we bridge the gap between?
I would love to have a one-on-one conversation.
Lord, this is a question for you, 'cause you do have to...
I understand.
He gonna pull you to the side, he's gonna pull you to the side and y'all can...
I don't bridge, well, this is for the people.
But the people great.
I'm gonna tell you right now, what we're doing right now, have a conversation.
'Cause I'm gonna say this.
No, 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 no. And y'all have that conversation over to the side. I appreciate, I love you, I love you.
I'm like, I said, get there for me.
Seeing no one else.
Talking about gun violence this time like I usually do. And I'm not the same at all, and I'm actually the greatest people. My name is Jacey Malakella. I'm a resident of Ed Eastham, Pennsylvania, on East 9th Street. Uh, literally the first block of the rich, from Sun Village. I run the Chester City Incident Blog on Facebook. What I just wanted to do is, I wanted to reach out and I wanted to thank the citizens of Chester for helping us out so much with, uh, Phoenix Family Services of Delco, the fire victims that we've been able to help with the assistance of the citizens of the city of Chester. Uh, you guys have been absolutely amazing. Um, we have helped, uh, eight families so far. Uh, not all from the city of Chester, but you guys, like I said, have been awesome. Um, and the one fire, uh, that we did have specifically that was on Honan Street in the city of Chester, I am happy to say that they have now, uh, the entire family has now moved into their new home and is happy where they are. And we couldn't have done that without you guys. So on behalf of Phoenix Family Services and Chester City Incident Blog, I just wanted to thank everybody.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you. Let me, let me, let me just say to all of you as we close out tonight, this is, this is hard on all of us, I don't know if we're gonna still have the press conference after we're done, okay, and I'm gonna say something to the press, this is hard on all of us. I drove my, I take my granddaughter to school every morning, and little Miss Chatty, she's nine years old, she talks all the way, all the way to school. This morning, she was kinda baffled because I wasn't responding to her, I was just looking at her, I was just looking at her, and after I dropped her off, I personally began to cry because I can only imagine, that's all I can do, I can't, well, I can't imagine life without her, and so, I don't, there's, there's a certain calling, the calling of God on certain people's lives, I wish the young lady would stay, because I would told her that that's a calling on Pastor Williams' life, that was a calling on his life, there's certain callings on my life, there's certain callings on your lives, you have a purpose, and that is your purpose, it does not mean that I don't care, or you don't care just as much as the next person, that's just not really your calling. Some people can sing, some people are horrible, why, because it's not your calling, and so, but collectively, the calling on all of our lives is to help each other, to be a shield, the best shield we can be around our young people, and so that, and speak life to them so that they can live and not die. It's not just this council, it's not just our police officers, it's not just our firefighters, our chaplains, it's not just our ministers, our emems, it's not just our moms and our dads, but it's each and every one of us in this community. It takes each and every one of us to make a difference in this community, and my hope and prayer is that we all band together, pull together and do just that. So I swear, I wanna, I wanna thank all of you for being here tonight, I see Mr. Church, you always say that, Mr. Church. You mean it this time?
I mean it this time. I have a question.
Say your name.
My name is Edward Church, 816 West Third Street, Chester, Pennsylvania, all seventy-some years of it here in the city, had an incident, child in the house got shot, police come through the door, detectives, they tell us what happened, and I say, you know, you have anything taking you anywhere, they say, we just had this, they were down at the scene and whatever, so they said, you know, we haven't spoken to anyone that knew anything about it, I say, well, I wasn't there, but I can tell you one thing about it, he just left the house with some fellas in the car, and he was talking to them from the house on his cell phone to them in the car, he left with them several minutes later, less than a half an hour, put six shells up underneath his chin, killed him, so I say, you know, why don't you look at his phone and see who he was talking to, because that's, he just left the house and got in the car with him? Oh, we can't do that, we have to go to court and get a court order in order to invade his privacy, that's BS, I mean, we know, I mean, see, when you say cooperate with the police, it's, it goes back and it goes forth, we know that policemen stop people on the street, if they think they're drug dealers, they take their cell phones, and they be looking at them right then, I mean, we can see them doing that, but now, here's this mother saying, and here's him saying, hey, why don't you follow this here, it makes sense, he just left, just got in the car with him, he was talking to him on the phone, you can't take the phone, find out what's happening, I mean, maybe you can find out what the person is, you can find out what car they on, et cetera, et cetera, I mean, is it, is it, is it like that, I mean, how come in some circumstances, such as they got somebody and they think they can make a drug binge, so it's all right to go into their phone, but here we talking about homicide that just took place, and somebody's telling you that they can't go into the cell phone, we haven't heard anything from the police since his death, since his murder, nothing.
When was that, Mr. Church?
Um, when, it's been close to two years now, I guess, you know, when Junebug's son got killed.